Good afternoon, I'm Carolyn Ry, School Board Chair. This workshop of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach is hereby convened at 3:30 PM on this 27th day of October 2020. Pursuant to the state of emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Governor's executive orders, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act as amended by the Virginia General Assembly, and the School Board's April 7, 2020 Emergency Resolution, the School Board and selected staff members will meet in person at the School Administration Building. However, at this time, it's impractical and unsafe to allow other persons to attend the School Board meeting due to physical distancing and safety precautions related to the pandemic. Members of the public will be able to observe the School Board meeting through live streaming on VB schools.com, broadcast on VBTV Channel 47, and on Zoom. It's the School Board's protocol to break at 5:30 to prepare for the regular School Board meeting to begin at 6:00 PM. At 5:30 PM, the Board will conclude its formal meeting unless the School Board votes to continue the informal meeting until 5:45 PM. The informal session will conclude no later than 5:45 PM in order to allow preparation time for the regular School Board meeting. So we will quickly open it up for School Board Admin Matters and Reports, and I'll just start with a notation that in order for this workshop to flow quickly, what we're going to ask that is that we do have a number of guests who will be introduced and will want to prioritize questions to them, the physicians. So because of that, we're going to ask, we have the budget resolutions that Mr. Hunsaker will be presenting, but because of the tight timeframe, we may have to hold off on most questions and discussion until the formal meeting, so we'll keep track of that. And likewise with the reopening discussion that will mostly focus on the physicians and with the full expectation that that will continue during the formal meeting. So we'll just keep track as we go along with that. So Admin Matters, we'll start with Mrs. Felton.
Thank you Chair Ry. I'd just like to remind my colleagues that on tomorrow, the 28th of October, that we will be having our VSBA Tywhahter Regional Fall Meeting. You should have received email concerning the registration and how to get to link onto that. I would encourage you to join, it's going to be very interesting, a lot of interesting things to talk about. So please, if you don't have the link or you did not get the link for the meeting on tomorrow, please contact me and let me know. But I would encourage you also to join because we will be discussing not only the minutes of the day, but the things that throughout the year that's going to follow, and especially the Tywhahter Regional meeting that we have in March. So with that said, if anyone has any concerns or did not receive the email concerning the link, please let me know and I will get that to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Then I'll just make a notation that dovetails to an extent on Mrs. Felton's message, the the VSBA Annual Convention, which typically is held in Williamsburg the week before Thanksgiving. We've all gotten the virtual notification on that. And our clerk has a sign up sheet, and due to our physical distancing, we figured it was most efficient that you just, if you're interested in signing up, that you do so during any of the breaks, and she'll leave the sheet at her seat there. And there actually is a column too for will not attend, so I think she's asking you to just check that, just so we're sure we're not leaving anybody out. So this is kind of a rare thing, and I think it would be nice at minimum to have, you know, one of us, I know it's not the most desirable to think about almost two days at the computer following it, but we can certainly ask you all to check the schedule and sessions, and if there are particular, if there's a particular session you're interested in, whether it's me or anybody else attending, you can certainly let us know. But you know, we do ask that if you register, that it's with the intent of attending the majority of the sessions over the two-day period. Mrs... All right then, with that, we will introduce, we have our three, we have three budget resolutions, and we have Mr. Hunsaker who's now on. So welcome sir.
Good afternoon, Chair Ryan, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Ry, Vice Chair Melnick, School Board members, and Dr. Spence. Great to be with you this afternoon. We have a lot to cover, but I'll try to get through that as quickly as possible, making sure that I've covered everything that you understand, the information that you're going to receive. This first slide shows you the reversion funds resolution, the calculation for the resolution, and as you can see, we've identified the different types of revenues. That far-right column shows the FY 2019-20 reversion monies available, funds available, which exclude the funds that might be over or under the budget, and that's $30,008,17,755. The revenue over budget came in at $4,471,591. That was the federal revenue. The state revenue over budget came in at $277,031. And then we have another category of other revenue that came in $1,013,935. And the actual state sales tax came in over budget at $628,989. All of those excess revenues were surprises to us. We thought that they would be actually shortfalls. So if you add that $6,391,546 to the $30,008,17, you get the amount available for reversions at $37,209,301. Then we're going to add back, the athletics fund is a separate fund, so we reverted $1,355,022 from the athletics fund, which was not spent, and $463,303 from Green Run Collegiate, which is also in a separate fund. You add those two things, and we're up to $39,027,626. We did actually have a revenue shortfall that was from the city, and instead of being a $23 million shortfall, it was $2,724,349. If you take those monies away, then we have a net funds available, revenues available for reapropriation of $36,303,277. Everybody kind of following me with that? Next slide. This is the simplest way I can explain to you how we got to the $36,303,277, which by the way, in the far-right column, it shows the percent of the school operating budget. That's 4.2% of the school operating budget. You recall from past years, really, our average over probably 10 years has been around 2%, give or take 3% or 4% either way. Well, instead of having a $2 million state shortfall, which we were projecting because of projecting the state sales tax to be short, and the $23 million, we were told by the city staff and the city council that we were going to be short with the revenue sharing funds, those two total $25 million. Had we actually had that shortfall, then we would have only had the $11,303,277. That's what the reversion amount would have been. That's 1.3% of the operating budget. Well, we got $6,391,546 that we didn't anticipate, we didn't anticipate we would have any excess revenues. So if you take those numbers away, our actual reversion would have been $4,911,731, which is 0.6%. So if all these things had happened, we would have really been cutting our operating budget year-end to the bone. So this slide will be one of the ones that we will be sharing with the city council when we present our reversion resolution to the city council. Next one. So our spending recommendations for the $36,303,277 are shown on this slide. In the current year budget, we appropriated from the Special School Reserve Fund, actually $5,800,000. Remember, that's the money we're using to balance every year's budget. I wanted to show that we're trying to spend this down lower, not knowing what revenues for next year are going to be. So we took $300,000 from that, and we want to protect then $5,500,000 of the special reserve funds and have that reapropriated to help us balance at the end of this year if we have a shortfall, okay? That leaves the $30,808,277. We have the project for Lynn Haven Middle School to build out the facility for the Achievable Dream. We need that $8,750,000 to complete that CIP project. So you take that away, and you can see in the far-right column, it's a little over $22 million left. You know that we haven't funded Princess Anne High School in the six-year CIP, so we're going to try every year to add more money in that project so it could be completed in a much sooner timeframe. So we want to allocate the $7,530,277 to Princess Anne High School CIP project. That leaves us $15 million. Our risk management fund is really at the margin right now, and so based on our projections of what we think might happen and what we know we already have obligations for, we need to beef that up by $2 million. So we're down to $13 million left. We are proposing a one-time bonus, and I'll go into a little bit more detail on that in a minute, a one-time bonus of $1,000 for all full-time equivalent employees. Total of that's $11 million. We're down to $2 million. Over the last few weeks, a lot of discussion about the amount of the stipend that we're paying the teachers that are teaching the dual in-person and remote classes at the same time. Our projected cost for increasing the stipend is, the total cost would be $6 million. We've budgeted $2 million out of one of the CARES funds. We want to, we want to budget another $2 million out of the CARES money, which would be $4 million, and that leaves us an additional $2 million that we will use of the reversion funds to, so that we can actually triple the amount of money for the stipend. Now let me clarify that. We hope that we will be able to pay them triple of what we proposed to pay initially. Dawn will be keeping a list of the teachers that earned the stipend during the first semester, and we will pay that, we will pay the stipends out in two payments during the year, one at the end of the first semester, one at the end of the year. So those teachers that are now teaching the dual situation, we will pay them out, and we intend to pay them three times what the stipend they were going to get is. That will leave a balance. Let's assume that that balance is going to be the $4 million for the rest of the year. We're going to have probably a lot more teachers as we bring the rest of the students back that'll be teaching these dual situations. So at the end of the year, the goal is that we would pay those teachers the triple the amount of the original budget. That's the goal. It's based on our best projections right now, and so we hope that happens. But that's the plan. That enables us to provide a whole lot more funds for the stipends for these teachers that are teaching the dual situation. Next slide. I typically would not read the resolution typically, especially during the board meeting, one of you would typically read the reversion, but I want to go through parts of it because we're not only trying to make sure that you understand what we're doing, but we send a message to the city council, because this will be the resolution that they get, to help them understand why we have $36 million of reversion funds. So basically, that first whereas just acknowledges that we were anticipating to have a $25 million shortfall, 23 from the city and $2 million from the state. During this past year, the Budget Department, Finance Department, we responded by deactivating all the procurement cards except for essential purchases, canceling all and delaying all non-essential projects and limiting purchasing to items and services that were related to the emergency. Couple other things, we eliminated out of district travel, and there was a whole lot of other things because we were facing a $25 million shortfall. And that is next, whereas we acknowledge that we have the $6,391,546 over budget, over the revenues that were budgeted. That was totally unexpected. There's no way that we could have anticipated, we not only have a $25 million shortfall, but we would have additional revenues during this past spring. So not going to read anymore because it just lays out what the spending plan that you saw on the slide before, but just gives them a little bit more of a background of how we really wound up with the reversion funds that we're asking them to reappropriate. Go ahead, pass the second and third slide, yeah, that one. We've been working day and night over weeks to try to get a handle of around this budget situation that we're in and the uncertainties that we have and we face, we still have uncertainties going forward. But we believe that because we weren't able to do anything for our employees, zero pay increases, and everybody is really, really working very hard during very stressful and unusual times. So we have a three-pronged approach to enhance employee compensation for this year. One of them, we've already mentioned, the one-time bonus of $1,000 for all full-time equivalent employees, tripling the stipend for teachers providing the dual instruction for option one, the face-to-face, and option two, virtual. And the third one is $1.9 million, which we will absorb in the operating budget. We've been analyzing and we're comfortable with that, and this would allow us to pay employees, let me just read it, effective December 1st, VPCPS will reinstate the 0.5% pay increase that was included in the original FY 2021 budget for employees who advanced an experience step this fiscal year. Now let me stop there. That experience step has already occurred. HR went ahead and had moved all employees on the scales that moved up a step, and it was out without $0. So they've been given their experience. So this pay increase includes all employees currently on steps 1 through 30, and since steps 0 and 1 currently receive the same pay, the 0 employees will receive a .25 supplement. So that's the entry level to our pay scale for teachers, and this will help us be a little bit more competitive in the marketplace. Those employees that are on step 1 will receive the .05%. Then those above the scale, which are above step 30, will also receive the .05% cost-of-living increase. So that's a three-pronged approach to employee compensation during this year. We, our goal is to pay the one-time bonus and the second paycheck in November, which would be November the 30th. It's a goal because we're assuming that the city council will approve our request for these funds. And the stipend will be effective immediately, assuming that the city, you will approve and the city council will approve the revenue reversion resolution, and the $1.9 million will also be contingent on the you approving and the city council approving because we need those, actually, that one doesn't require the city council because we're going to absorb those funds within the budget. That's a cost of about $2.5 million, by the way. So I know you want to hold your questions till after the workshop and during the formal Ms. Ry, do you want me to move on? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Oh no, I'm sorry, did you have one more to cover?
I have the COVID-19 CARES funds.
Right. Okay, Mrs. Haltz, if you could hold off and we'll let Mr. Hunsaker finish.
And I'll try to get through these quickly. The coronavirus relief funds, which is the CRF, this is a new award of CARES money. We will be allocated through the state in an amount of $11,677,033. Those CRF funds kind of are, not kind of, they're based on an allocation of $175 per pupil. They're using our projected September 30th numbers, not the actual numbers. These awards will not be adjusted because of the actual ADM. It's going to be, it's based on the projected. So we're not going to have this money and start spending it and then find out it'll be less. These funds, and this is a kind of a laundry list, a longer list, we're still working on the spending plan for these funds since we didn't find out about it till about a week ago, will be for preparedness and response measures during the 2021 school year to include the supplemental staffing costs, personal protective equipment, cleaning supplies and technology, or distance learning. Those are some examples. The key is that these funds have to be spent. We have to have written a check by December the 30th. It's a short period of time, given the fact that if you approve tonight, we'll send it to the city council. They don't have a meeting on the 3rd because that's voting day. Their next meeting will be November the 10th. That's the earliest that these funds will be approved. So we're going to have a real compressed time to spend these monies. And I really don't need to go through the next one. This CARES appropriation is a part of the original CARES Act, but it's what's called the Secondary School Emergency Relief, ESER, fund. And in that appropriation, well, that's just describing the original, go to the next one, Regina. That has described the original $10,049, that's already happened. This second CARES Act sub-award is ESER and GEAR, which is Governor's Emergency Education Relief. That set aside is an amount of $397,953. That's an appropriation available to us, and in addition to $1,236,708. Again, these are two separate grants, but a part of the larger CARES grant. We'll be using them, these funds for the same kinds of things that we have to use the CARES money for, examples for additional tutoring for students with disabilities, to implement universal socio-emotional screening. This is an example, to support remote learning through education technology and supplemental instructional support, to purchase cleaning supplies, disinfectant supplies and equipment, and additional personal protective equipment for students and staff. The period for these funds to be spent is the same period of the first CARES Act, so we will have until May the 12th of, I'm sorry, we will have until September the 30th of And Regina, I think that's it because otherwise it goes into the language of the CARES. That's a fairly quick overview with as much of detail as I can give you, given the timeframe of the reversion resolution and the two CARES resolutions.
Well, thank you, sir. Well, thank you, sir. And so for those with questions and that, and for the Performance and Planning Monitoring Committee that want to weigh in as well, we'll have that opportunity. And Mrs. Haltz, if you're listening, we'll have that opportunity during action in the formal meeting. So, and perhaps the presentation raised a few more questions or comments, so we look forward to that later. Thank you, sir. So now our other subject of the hour, the next phase of our school reopening, and Dr. Bergen is here to start things off, and we'll, and we'll be welcoming some guests, so I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Rei, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the school board, Dr. Spence. For our students, parents, and staff who may be watching the presentation from a remote location, my name is Mark Bergen. I'm the Chief of Staff, and it's my pleasure to be here with you this afternoon, along with some distinguished guests, to provide more updates for the board and the community on our efforts to support students and staff with both virtual and in-person instruction. I'm going to begin this presentation by revisiting the guidance that I had shared with the board at your last meeting from the CDC and subsequently from the VDH regarding health metrics, as I need to offer a clarification on the comparison of our health metrics and our reopening plan with those recommended by the CDC. I'm then going to display the familiar-looking screenshots of our current health metrics in the eastern region to show the trend over the past seven months. And Dr. Robertson will follow me to discuss the administration's recommendations for the return of additional secondary students in grades eight and nine and 10 through 12, based on the feedback that we've received since the last board meeting from a variety of stakeholders. We then will hear from those distinguished guests, including Dr. Lindsay, the Director of the Virginia Beach Department of Public Health, two members of our local panel of physicians, Dr. Mitchell and Dr. Rowland, who previously addressed the board this summer when we first introduced the reopening plan. And then Dr. Martin, the current President of the Virginia Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, will be joining us via Zoom from his home or office in Northern Virginia. We'll then, of course, conclude the workshop by addressing your questions. So this is the slide that I shared at the last board meeting to introduce the health metrics recommended by the CDC and by the VDH in comparison with our own health metrics. As I shared with you at that time, our plan is grounded in the same two key metrics as recommended by the CDC, namely the number of new cases per week and percent positivity. And as I shared with you at your last board meeting, we use a range of three colors in our plan, which are very similar or nearly identical to the ranges for the five colors recommended by the CDC, particularly in green and red. However, it was brought to my attention that the comparison as displayed in this slide is inaccurate, so I've recreated the tables in order to correctly display the information. So let's first review how we have defined number of new cases in our plan, as displayed across the top of this slide. For new cases, we are using three colors, green, yellow, and red, over a period of seven days. We have commonly referred to the ranges within our plan as less than 26.5 cases per day for green, between 26.5 and 265 cases per day for yellow, and 265 or more cases per day for red. However, there's a mathematical formula that is used to determine those ranges for our three colors, which is actually based on 10 or fewer cases per 100,000 individuals for green, between 10 and fewer than 100 individuals for yellow, and more than 100, more than 100 cases per 100,000 individuals for red. We then use the population of the eastern region, which is a total of 1.8 million people, to calculate our seven-day rolling averages. Now let's look at the ranges across the bottom of the slide as recommended by the CDC and subsequently by the VDH. First, again, whereas we have three colors, you'll notice they have five colors. And whereas we're using a seven-day average, this is the distinction I failed to make two weeks ago, they're recommending a 14-day rolling average. So you'll notice that the ranges for the CDC appear to be different than the ranges for ours with five or fewer than five for lowest risk, between five and 20 for lower risk, between 20 and 50 for moderate risk, and 50 to 200 for higher risk, and then more than 200 cases per 100,000 individuals would be the highest risk. However, the ranges are actually identical in our plan to those of the CDC because of the 14-day rolling average in comparison with the seven-day rolling average. When you factor in the population of the eastern region of 1.8 million people, the calculation for the combined ranges in the two shades of green for the CDC are identical to our overall green of 26.5 cases per day in the eastern region. The greatest difference between our metrics and those of the CDC are those in the middle, since we use a single color of yellow, whereas the CDC uses two colors, yellow and orange, which equate to ranges of 26.5 to 66, and 66 to 265 cases per day. And lastly, the calculation for the CDC's red zone is identical with ours. When you do the calculation, it's 265 or more cases per day based upon the population of the eastern region. The comparison of our metrics for percent positivity line up exactly with the metrics recommended by the CDC, which include a range of 0 to less than 5% for our green, which the CDC has as two ranges of green of 0 to 3 and 3 to 5. A range of 5% up to 10% for our yellow, which again, the CDC divides into two colors of 5 to 8% and 8 to 10%. And then the red zone is 10% or more holds true for both our plan and those recommended by the CDC. So in conclusion, it's gratifying to know that these two main indicators, the number of new cases per day and the percent positivity, and the ranges for those indicators on which our reopening plan is grounded, are the same core indicators and ranges as recommended by the CDC and the VDH in their latest guidance, which we received just last month. So as I've typically done at the past eight or 10 of our workshops, let's take a look now at our current numbers. This is a screenshot from the VDH website that shows the historical data for percent positivity for the eastern region. As indicated on the graph, the seven-day rolling average for percent positivity fell into the yellow zone and remained there throughout August and September, steadily declining from 9.3% in early August down to 5.6% by the end of September. And over the last four weeks, the percent positivity has held steady in the green zone at 4.3% at the time of our last board meeting, and currently stands at 4.2%. And this is the summary of the seven-day rolling average for new cases of COVID-19 in the eastern region since the onset of the pandemic. After reaching a peak in July, the number of new cases dramatically declined throughout the month of August and into September. However, for the past seven to eight weeks, the number of new cases has plateaued with totals of 166 on the 9th of September, 171 on September 22, 151 at the time of our last board meeting, and currently stands at 156.3 cases per day. With that quick review of our health metrics, I'd now like to invite Dr. Robertson to the podium to discuss our current operating status and the administration's recommendations for continuing to phase additional secondary students for in-person instruction. Dr. Robertson.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Dr. Bergen, and good afternoon. My portion of the presentation will focus on the items listed here with the request of the school board at the end, and that'll be this evening, to provide a decision on the administration's recommendation for next steps. I thought you might want to see data related to what we view as positive results since schools opened on September 8th, as well as since our students started to strategically return to school in phases since September 22nd. As you know from our COVID dashboard, we have had positive cases in both the in-person and virtual settings, but data indicates our health and safety protocols are doing what they were designed to do, and that is to mitigate the spread of the virus. To date, we have not had to face any scenario where we considered closing more than a single classroom. I thought you may also want to see some quantitative data related to academics, attendance, and behavior. As you can see, at least 83% of our option-one secondary students and at least 77% of our option-two students earn a C or higher in marking period one. Since elementary schools on the nine-weeks model, we do not have any final grades yet. However, we do have daily attendance data, which indicates students are attending class, whether virtually or in person, and this is key to academic success. Finally, as expected and appreciated nonetheless, we've had a small handful of referrals and suspensions over the first seven weeks of school. Make no mistake, this work comes with many known challenges that we work on each day as a collective school division and in each of our 86 school sites. Four main challenges are noted here and include in parentheses how we are addressing each one. You've heard about our COVID investigation process and seen the data indicating it is working. We know that as more students return, our health and safety mitigation strategies become even more important. I'm very proud of how we have addressed meeting family, students, staff, and school scheduling needs through our elementary school and secondary school plans, using extra-block allowances to address class-size challenges in the face-to-face setting, and by acknowledging the additional effort required by teachers to provide instructions to students simultaneously, some of whom are in class and others who are at home, by paying them a stipend. Finally, we continue to fully utilize Monday professional learning for staff that meets their individual needs and the needs of the school and the division. The division through weekly communications, schools through weekly newsletters, and the continued transformation of our Virginia Beach Schools website has helped staff and our community have access to key information in a timely manner. Finally, schools have created very good plans to address the many logistics to address health and safety mitigation strategies, and we will continue to do so as we plan to welcome additional students back to in-person learning. Wanted to share three such pictures of how Kempsville High School has arranged their cafeteria, how Landstown Middle School has arranged their hallways, and how Creed's Elementary School has arranged their lunch schedule rotation to ensure they are following health and safety mitigation strategies. Each school has these same things in place, and all schools will have unique challenges based on the building size, configuration, and the number of students in person. Since we met on October 13th, we have met with and/or surveyed the following stakeholder groups about our scenarios to bring more students back. We found each group to be forward-thinking, pragmatic, and responsive, and we used their feedback to develop our recommendation. On this slide, I captured the most salient themes from each group. Please note, each group provided more information as we discussed each scenario, yet we focused only on the information specific to the scenarios. All middle school and high schools met with their instructional leadership teams and their admin teams to provide their list of pros and challenges for each scenario. All schools favored bringing back their remaining students in grades seven and eight and 10 through 12 to support their social-emotional learning needs. They also acknowledged having more students return with well-present challenges, like scheduling their return and supporting health and safety mitigation strategies. We met virtually with teacher assembly. Teacher assembly is one teacher from every school in the division, and shared the slides from the October 13th presentation. We then assigned them to breakout rooms to provide a list of pros and challenges from those slides. Both teacher groups favored seeing their students each week and understood we needed to bring the remaining students back to school. They also noted their anxiety about having more students in the building and having more teachers be required to teach face-to-face and virtual students simultaneously. Similarly, Dr. Spence engaged teacher forum, and that's a group of Former Teachers of the Year, in the same discussion. And within this group, middle school staff did not indicate a clear preference between scenario B and C, but did recognize more students needed to return to school. High school teachers in the teacher forum preferred scenario A, no additional students returning, and favored scenario B, adding one more grade, in this case seniors, over scenario C. We also shared this information with the VBA. Feedback from the VBA noted they understood why students need to be in school for learning and how this supports student SEL. They also worried about health and safety mitigation strategies with more students present, having staff available to cover all classes and duties each day, how to handle lunches, and the challenges that teaching students in both face-to-face and virtual at the same time brings. In summary, each group wants kids to return as long it is, as long as it is safe to do so. They want to feel that staff and students' health and safety is not compromised in any manner, and they want to feel supported in completing their work. I'm sure you recognize this slide from the October 13th presentations. Rather than going over each challenge, I thought I would share the three that posed the largest challenges. They were handling breakfast and lunch, providing transportation services to more students, and staffing, staffing in terms of teachers and support staff. Please note, each school has been planning on how to safely feed students when in-school and follow all health and safety mitigation strategies. In short, we will be ready, but it will look different in every building, and this is because schools have different configurations, different cafeteria capacity, different number of students returning, et cetera. You should expect some schools may need four or more lunch periods built into their bell schedule, while others can accommodate the extra students within the current bell schedule. Some schools will split students into eating in the cafeteria, in the classroom, commons area, and when the weather's good, outside. In terms of transportation, David Pace and his team have been planning on how to transport more students and meet health and safety protocols. They need every available day between now and November 12th to prepare their plans, but can't accommodate all returning students. In terms of staffing, we continue to process retirements and resignations across our teacher, custodial, transportation, and assistant groups. Although we continue to hire new staff, the vacancy numbers are not reducing as they would in every other year. We must be sure that no creative plan results in such stress on resources that we cannot meet success and follow our health and safety mitigation strategies. The remaining areas noted on the slide are being planned for, and we are confident in our progress. To bring this to a close, I will quickly go through the next four slides, as you did see these in our last board meeting. This slide provides the three scenarios we shared. Scenario B is to bring back one additional grade level at middle school and high school, thus leaving at least one grade level of students out for the remainder of the first semester. Scenario C at the middle school level would keep grade six in attendance on Tuesday through Friday and allow for both grades seven and eight to return on a hybrid schedule, either a two-day rotation or a week rotation. Under scenario C, all middle school students will be able to return for some portion of their learning setting. Similarly, scenario C is unique at the high school level. With four grades present, they cannot create any split similar to middle school. They considered several options to include bringing back two grade levels at a time using either the two-day rotation or the week rotation, using an alpha split to allow for all grades to be present on, again, either a two-day or week rotation. The option of having, say, grade nine and 10 together and grade 11 and 12 together on a rate-rotation model was not going to work because it resulted in face-to-face classes being larger than the room capacity, more students requiring transportation in one group than the other, eliminating the whole school experience, keeping families with multiple high school students together, and was dismissed by high school principals as a viable option. The high school principals are confident the alpha-split model is the best option for moving forward. After considering all stakeholder feedback After considering all stakeholder feedback and much discussion, the administration recommends the following plan. We would like to bring back all remaining Option One secondary students on November twelfth, the first day of the third marking period in middle school and high school. Of note, we do have students in select schools now whose families chose Option One, or they are new enrollees, on wait lists due to no available room in current classes. We will continue to review those wait lists and bring back those students as soon as seats become available. At the middle school level, all Grade Six students will continue to attend on Tuesday through Friday. Our expansion brings back Grade Seven and Grade Eight on the two-day-per-week rotation model, as noted on this slide. This was the model preferred by all of the groups when they considered the two-day rotation or the week rotation. At the high school level, we will not be able to have ninth-grade students continue to attend four days per week. With four grade levels and health and safety protocols, we must revert all students to attending in the two-day rotation model with the other three days being remote learning. Of note, Mondays will remain asynchronous as teachers have professional learning time scheduled in all of the scenarios. However, the other two remote days will have synchronous or live instruction within each class period, meaning we will increase the number of teachers qualifying and receiving the stipend. Before I close, I think it's important to recognize that the success of this expansion will require additional supports. At four middle schools with zero bell programs that support other programs within the school, those students' zero bell virtual class will be moved from eight fifty-five to nine thirty-five to eight fifteen to eight fifty-five. At each high school, additional lunches will need to be added within the regular school day schedule to accommodate the additional students. With more students returning, transportation services will be making minor changes to bus routing, which could mean students will be riding a different bus but not having different bus stops. The Department of Teaching and Learning and the Office of Instructional Technology has been providing and will continue to provide focused professional learning on how to teach students concurrently in both the face-to-face and virtual setting. In addition, the Department of Teaching and Learning is reviewing curriculum standards at the secondary level, as they did last spring, to identify the power standards to determine what additional support they can provide to middle school and high school teachers. With more students returning, we will drastically increase the number of teachers being required to teach students in both the face-to-face and virtual setting at the same time, and thanks to the board's request for additional funding, we will be able to pay these teachers for this work. The Department of School Leadership and Human Resources are working together to review possible revisions that can be made to the 2020-2021 teacher evaluation process to alleviate pressure on both teachers and administrators. We hope to have a plan soon for the board review. And as we have done since March thirteenth, we will continue to assess our ability to meet all of the demands that come with this plan. They include monitoring staffing levels across the entire division, teachers, custodians, bus drivers, teacher assistants, et cetera, monitor physical space within each school building, and any other unintended outcomes that may require our immediate attention. In addition, we will continue to monitor health metrics, positive cases, and the impact on schools or the division, and we will respond per our return-to-school plan. And this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Lindsay.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson, and welcome back, Dr. Lindsay.
Thank you. Appreciate being here. It is good to see all of you. I understand we are on a limited amount of time, so I'll try to go through some things quickly and some information I may skip over as it was covered already. This is just a brief depiction of where we have been, starting with the closure of schools. Oh, well, I'm sorry, the closure closures by the governor with the stay-at-home order and then going through reopening phases. And I'll point to, as you noticed, the dramatic peak, at which time we had a surge in a number of cases. And prior to that, one thing that I'd like to point out is that even prior to the final phase of reopening, we do start to see cases rise as people anticipate a reopening of restrictions. We are fortunate that our cases have gone down. If we go to the next slide here, the incidence rate of cases per month shows the peak during the surge and a steady decline in numbers of cases that we've seen on monthly basis since that time. However, of note is that we have not returned to levels prior to the pandemic surge that we experienced earlier in the summer. Just reviewing just some basics about what we're seeing in terms of pandemic in Virginia. Again, looking at age distribution, wanted to point out that largely we have shifted to seeing a much younger age group dramatically involved with a significant proportion, at least twenty-five percent of our cases in a ten-year age range from twenty to twenty-nine years of age, and a significant proportion under forty-nine years of age. Racial distribution is not as dramatic in Virginia Beach as we've seen in some communities, even some neighboring communities. However, as you'll note, there does seem to be a slight disproportionate increase in cases among the Hispanic population over their representation in the population. In neighboring communities, we're seeing dramatic increases in cases in African-American population out of proportion to their representation in the population. And here in Virginia Beach, as in other communities, whites have a lower incidence of cases in comparison to their representation in the population. I did want to point out, when we look at hospitalization, that in particular among children or youth under the age of nineteen, there's a stratification of race that is disproportionate to the population and essentially affecting minority populations there. And that is, we also see that trend in adults as well. So in summary, just kind of looking at the health impact of COVID-19 in Virginia Beach, the recent surge in infections from COVID-19 was characterized by a dramatic rise in cases among individuals less than forty years of age, most significantly in the twenty to twenty-nine-year-old age group. The recent surge in cases was associated with identification of a pattern of lapses in preventive practices, and we observed this in public, particularly among young adults, gatherings around bar areas or restaurants and club-style businesses, and also private gatherings for celebrations such as graduations, Father's Day, birthdays, and backyard barbecues. I bring this up now because these are patterns of practice we continue to observe in our case investigations and are a remain of great concern. Human behavior matters. We must support each other to reduce the impact of COVID-19 in our community, and our choices have a direct effect on our ability for our children to safely attend school. So everything that we choose to do and practice as not only a school but as a community impacts the safety of our children in returning to school. Here, pulling from the dashboard, I just wanted to point out where we are as a region in terms of community transmission, and we're currently at what is rated as a moderate level of community transmission. We look at several indicators of disease burden and trend, and currently we are also at a moderate level of disease burden with what we call a fluctuating trend. We look at the trend of increase or decrease in cases over a fourteen-day period, fourteen consecutive days, and if it continues to move in one direction, then we would consider that either increasing or decreasing, or if it goes up and down, fluctuating. So we're seeing a fluctuating trend at this point. And now kind of getting into some of the metrics in the dashboard and school indicators that we've been talking about, I did briefly want to point out a timeline here as we talk about the differences between the different indicators and the dashboard metrics that we've been following, that the CDC published School Indicators for Dynamic Decision-Making was not published until September fifteenth, and then several weeks after that, Virginia Department of Health worked to try to align those to show how they compared with the state pandemic indicators. So those metrics were not available when Virginia Beach was looking for measures to guide decision-making at a local level. And as you're aware, those were published and approved, published in late July and approved on August third by the board. And the previous presenter went over your reopening criteria, so I won't belabor that at this point. And then there was some discussion here about the CDC indicators for dynamic decision-making. Again, this decision-making guidance focuses on two indicators, again, focusing on case incidence as well as percentage positivity based on PCR tests, as well as a self-assessment section looking at key mitigation strategies and the assessment of the school system and their ability to be able to successfully carry out these key indicators. And of course, the range, as noted, is a range of progressively at five different So highlights from the CDC guidance, as is noted, it includes five key mitigation strategies that should be assessed in terms of the ability to successfully follow these in the school setting. Now, the first one being mask. I want to point out very importantly that that relates to the ability to consistently and properly wear masks by staff and students, and we recognize that students are at many different developmental levels within the school system. However, I hear from our superintendent that this has been a very successful experience in the school system, and children have adapted well to that. Very important that they, however, are worn over the nose and mouth, fully sealed. If it is slipping and sliding off the nose, then it is not offering proper protection, and it does have to cover both to be safe. Also, Sinus for Disease Control does not recommend face shields alone as being considered protective, although we know that there may be some children who may have developmental needs that will not permit them to be able to tolerate masks continuously. Social and physical distancing, CDC recommends six feet, social, physical distancing. There has been variation in recommendations. AAP recommends three feet as being sufficient, and in CDC and VDH recommendations, we recommend six feet if possible, but if that is not possible due to space in the school system, then at a minimum three feet. However, it is important to note that the definition of exposure does require at least six feet distance. An exposure would be anything less than six feet for cumulative timeframe of fifteen minutes within twenty-four hours, and that is an update from the Sinus for Disease Control in the past. Some, we had looked at this as an encounter of up to fifteen minutes of less than six feet, but currently there may be five-minute intervals throughout the day that may add up to fifteen minutes, and that would be considered an exposure. Cleaning and disinfection is very important, and spaces should be cleaned on a regular basis throughout the school system, really focusing on the common touch surfaces. Emphasis on hand hygiene and respiratory etiquette, and also contact tracing in partnership with the local health department. I've seen online that many people have questions about who does contact tracing, and it's very important that that is a partnership. We look to the school system to have an understanding of the child's movements and who they may have come in contact with. The school may be the first to reach out and identify people who need to go home and to send notifications to parents. However, in all cases of positive COVID-19, the health department does do a case investigation and review any potential exposures, and we work very closely with schools in that situation. So case investigations and contact tracings and the resources involved in investigating that will be impacted by the degree to which the school is able to adhere to the mitigation strategy. So in other words, as we go through those five mitigation strategies, if there are some that can't be fully adhered to, then when we get to the point of a case investigation, that may involve more resources and increase the potential risk for exposure. Also, in thinking about considerations for mitigation, health considerations are another factor to think about. Here you see a map of potential life expectancy at birth based upon where someone lives, and there may be as much as a fifteen- to twenty-year difference in life expectancy depending on where someone lives in Virginia Beach, even though we're talking about a community where our health status is relatively well. For many people, we still have some individuals who experience some challenges in their health status. And to the right of that is just a reminder of those things that contribute to what causes health or what contributes to our having a healthy lifestyle or unhealthy health outcomes. And as you can see from this, even though we tend to think about access to healthcare, it contributes only a small proportion to our overall health, and the rest is really focused largely on social and environmental factors as well as health behaviors. And many health behaviors are not necessarily always choices, but health represent also opportunities for being able to make the right choice as well. So looking at the next slide here, I bring this up because there are considerations regarding mitigations that may come into play as you discuss and look at the decisions of reopening based on metrics, particularly if there are differences in the level of a given metrics or if there's straddling on the border of going from one to another. These are things, factors, that are very important to potentially think about. So context is that perspective that ties this all together. Consider students and staff and how they may be impacted and what may impact their ability to actually follow recommended measures. Within the Virginia Beach school system, twenty-two, almost twenty-three percent of students are African-American, twelve-point-three percent of Hispanic ethnicity, was surprised, fifty-one percent qualify for free and reduced lunch, and eleven-point-nine percent of students are enrolled in special education programs. These are all students that may have special needs when we start looking at mitigation strategies and whether or not they will have the means of being able to follow those, them and their families. Staff, consider risk levels of teachers and support. Staff, consider risk levels of teachers and support staff and plan for staff safety to address capacity issues and also increase absenteeism among staff. Some Virginia Beach families may face challenges that place a household member in a higher risk category. So children who may be parts of multi-generational households or raised by their grandparents. Minority populations are at greater risk. We know of complications and we're definitely seeing that with COVID-19 and hospitalizations and deaths. Life expectancy of other health status in our health status assessments show these disparities, as I've noted, with adverse outcomes, which translate potentially into higher COVID risk. And this may impact all of these social determinants that are impacted by one's social and economic status in life also impact the ability to access health opportunity and, and, and resources to stay healthy or protect oneself. So an example may be transportation in the schools, as was discussed earlier, and there may not be another option for some children. So all of these factors may impact decisions regarding prioritization and appropriate strategies for different phases or consideration of adjustments needed to facilitate the ability to effectively apply mitigation strategies. Local metrics, just going back to, these are some of the core indicators from the CDC, from the CDC guidance. And here, the local metrics, we see that the number of new cases per hundred thousand falls into the higher, higher risk category, whereas percentage PCR testing currently at three point nine falls into the lower risk category. In addition, there are also secondary indicators, but those are not meant to be major indicators for decision making, but should be used possibly to, to support decision making and further conversation. Clearly, these, this framework again is designed to stimulate consideration and thought and deliberation. They're not intended to be mandates or to dictate decisions. We look to the schools at the local level to factor into their community what is right for that community. And some of this has been gone over as well. This was just a chart to kind of show the differences between the different indicators. I do want to offer a couple of clarifications. The Virginia, the, the local school indicators as well as the VDH pandemic metrics dashboard does look at daily case incidence rate and PCR positivity and looks at that a seven day rolling average. However, the CDC school metrics actually looks at a fourteen day cumulative case incidence rate and a fourteen day cumulative percent positivity. So rather than daily, it is a total over the fourteen days as opposed to weekly for the local metrics, for example. And you may have seen this before. This is just a sample guidance of how these may be aligned, these decisions of mitigation guidelines, examples of actions in, in alignment with the CDC transmission rates. Again, these are suggestions for thought and for consideration to show how they may be applied, and they are not mandates to say that for one, this is what has to be done. There may be a choice to choose from more than one level considering what may be going on in the school environment and what you're seeing in terms of actual indicator indices levels. So VDH and CDC metrics were developed as a guidance, as I mentioned, to help facilitate local decision making, not mandates, and local consideration must be factored in as well. The metrics were developed prior to the CDC incident indices. Reopening to date has made relatively stable progress without major outbreaks. And when I was asked to do this presentation, the question is, I understood it from the board was with the differences between the different indices, was public health recommending or suggesting that the local matrices should be eliminated in favor of following the CDC And these are the considerations that, that I'm offering for that is looking at how have we done so far in the reopening phases? And so we have seen stable progress as the school has advanced in reopening school to different levels. Public health case investigations and contact tracings have been manageable. There has been no surge or overwhelming resource requirements for public health, and we've not seen any resource demands or that cannot be met on schools such as staffing, et cetera. The school system collaborates very closely with local public health for monitoring of community transmission activity. And even though these other metrics, which are slightly different, exist, there's no reason why they can't be taken into consideration. And certainly, the Virginia Department of Health and the local health department closely monitors all of these metrics and is in constant communication with the schools and would bring to the, the school's attention any that were of concern. And it is imperative that every effort be directed at reducing risk and mitigation, mitigating potential impact. So applying the mitigation strategies as closely as possible and focusing on reducing transmission of COVID-19 citywide would be more important focuses than looking at changing metrics at this time. And this is just a depiction of what we're seeing, which I think complements what has been reported to you in terms of what is going on with cases here in the school system. These are cases that have been monitored by local public health in, related to the school system. So these are positive cases that were either students or staff associated with different schools. And I'm calling these, most of these are cases of concern rather than outbreaks. They do not meet the definition of outbreaks. In the vast majority of these cases, we are looking at single cases of students or employees whose exposure on case investigation can be directly related to activity or event outside of school. In other words, transmission did not occur in the school. We follow and monitor these for at least three transmission cycles. And to date, we have not seen any evidence of transmission in the school system from these individual cases. An outbreak would be defined as two or more cases in a school or a building with a linkage, epidemiologic linkage clearly seen. And so far, we've had only one such experience with the school system, and that was during the summer before students began to return. And it was, did not continue to propagate, so it was not a major outbreak. Other considerations, we are talking about a spectrum of risk. There's no zero risk. We understand that the preference is to have children in schools, and there are lots of benefits for that, as noted here. And there's always this balance between risk and benefit. And we leave it to the schools who know your students and staff well to make those final decisions. The school is however, a reflection of the larger community, and it's important that parents and the community are aware that cases will occur. It's a matter of having measures in place to, to limit the impact and the potential for transmission. And there may be intermittent opening and closing of schools, but a positive case does not automatically mean that a school should be closed. And cases do not automatically require an entire facility be cleaned, but focusing on focused areas of the school. So it, it is also very important that families and households understand that they play a critical role in securing the safety of schools by the choices they make regarding adherence to preventive measures. So we strongly recommend that families and the community support our schools by doing everything possible to follow the preventive practices and mitigation strategies that we discussed to continue to lower our rates so that our children can safely attend school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. So where do we go from here, Dr. Bergen?
We're going to reintroduce Dr. Rowland and Dr. Mitchell, who are going to talk to you a little bit about our current mitigations and how things are going from their perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Spencer. Welcome back, doctor.
Thank you. Welcome to Chan. I'm honored to be here and welcome being invited back, I presume, with your approval as well, so I, I, I thank you for that. Am I doing this myself? So the points I wanted to make, hopefully as quickly as possible, is why it's so important that we get the kids back into school. I think we can expand on that a little bit. You've heard some of it before. I wanted to mention some, from my perspective, some of the current successes. I was going to touch a little bit and expand a little bit on Dr. Lindsay's description, the new CDC definition. I didn't realize she was going to talk about it. And then some of the consistency in messaging sorts of things. The importance of getting back. I mean, this is from Virginia Beach and what this shows from John Paradiso and the Supervisors of Child and Behavioral Health for the City of Virginia Beach. You compare July, August and September nineteen requests for services have basically doubled year to year. And so the, the need is dramatic and what's happening to our kids out there because they're lacking a variety of resources that are available to them is, is a red flag for all of us, I think. As we've talked about the adverse mental health issues, I've been challenged in a lot of areas over the last seven months. Show me the data, show me the data, show me the data. It's going to be hard to show you the data immediately because a lot of this is going to be over the time. This is something I stumbled upon this week. Mental Health America is an online, it's sort of a self-reporting. People can search it out and find it and then take screening questionnaires for depression and suicide and anxiety. What this slide shows on that top left one is that the, the dramatic increase from twenty-nine percent to thirty-eight percent of the people seeking this out for help in are they depressed and taking those questions in the eleven to seventeen year old age group. Dramatic increase nineteen compared to twenty. And in the bottom right, you'll see those that have done the questionnaires, how many of them have suicidal ideation, more than half or nearly every day? And each of those lines is the, the months of the year, per year. That green line is what we've seen happen in two thousand and twenty. So of those seeking out because they have online access, what can I do about how I'm feeling? Dramatic increases in what we're experiencing right now. That's also borne out by what we as pediatric practitioners are seeing ourselves and our mental health folks at CHKD. The demand is overwhelming, the waiting lists, in spite of CHKD going from one psychiatrist five years ago to eight, and our counselors going from a handful to twenty-five or thirty, the waiting lists are overwhelming because of the stresses that the kids are under right now. Dr. Lindsay actually gave me a segue into this, and she doesn't realize it, when she was showing the shortened lifespans. And this, I thought, was pertinent to our conversation here. These data are directly from an A study, Adverse Childhood Experiences Study. It is showing that children that have adverse experiences lead to, at the very bottom, experiences disrupt neurodevelopment, social cognitive impairment, adoption of health risk behaviors, increased disease and early death. And it's very clear, a lot of this is aimed at, you know, kids have had abuse or neglect and those sorts of things. But it all comes from continued stress, high cortisol levels, day in, day out, leading to these adverse outcomes. We may not see the impact of all of this for ten, fifteen, twenty years, but it's clear that our communities are more stressed. It's not just because they're home from school. Okay, there's so many things going on, but the more we can do to normalize the lives of the kids, the more we can decrease that stress and take away some of those adverse impacts. Many of these experiences are hidden at this time. That's the other point, is very clear and as pediatricians, we are very afraid of the abuse and neglect that's occurring, and because the kids are not coming to school, they're not getting in front of mandated reporters, us and teachers, okay, to help identify the kids that are really at risk. And so we don't know that. And clearly, my own practice now, I practiced in Virginia Beach for sixteen years, and now I'm in Norfolk, but there are kids that I'm very afraid are not getting any education at all for a year. You know, the numbers that are engaged are fantastic, but I weekly see a child, oh yeah, we didn't bother to enroll them this year. We're just going to ride this out. Okay? You're not seeing those numbers because they're not enrolled, but I'm seeing it every day in my office. So that would fall under educational neglect, which is one of those adverse experiences. What we're also personally seeing in those stresses is there are increased numbers of gunshot wounds, innocent bystanders, accidents in kids than compared to anything that we've seen over the last three years. Depression and suicide is dramatically increased. Practically every child I see has had significant weight gain since their last visit, six months or a year ago. They've been sitting at home on screen for sometimes sixteen hours a day, eating snacks. So there you've got huge factors in how they need to get back out of that home and get back to some sort of normalization. The current successes. Dr. Lindsay said it, no outbreaks to date, yay, okay? I think that's fantastic with the, with the progressive return that you all have decided upon and supported. Dr. Lindsay talked about the outbreaks with more detail and expertise than I have. The, everything we know, the, all of the private schools that went back in August, September, none of them have closed back down because of outbreaks. I don't think any of them have even had outbreaks identified. They've, again, as Dr. Lindsay said, had sporadic cases. We can't prevent those. They're getting the cases at home and then they, they happen to be in school, but they've stopped the spread. And this has all occurred under the current metrics of that yellow and green that was approved that we've progressed through. It's not doing it under green and green, but it's continued successes under our current metrics. And in the distributions we get from the American Academy of Pediatrics, just even yesterday was more studies coming out that schools are not at risk for outbreaks. They're not causing increased incidence in the community, and they're not a source of outbreaks, unless you have the pictures of everybody going back in high school without their masks, okay? That's not going to work. We know that. Okay. And the same thing you said, so I'll skip that one. You don't need to see it for the third time. I was just going to elaborate a little bit upon that definition change. Dr. Lindsay described it to you. I, I think the elaboration, the point I'd like to make, it does not change the infectivity of the virus, okay? They haven't decided it's more infective, okay? All that definition change does is change contact tracing, okay? It's changed that, that, you know, we've decided, you know, we've thought all along at fifteen minutes that the risk of infection sort of went up, and now rather than a fifteen minutes continuous, it's fifteen minutes cumulative. And what that means is that person ought to be quarantined or ought to be investigated. or ought to be investigated. It's just changing the contact tracing. It's not saying that the virus is more infective than we thought. It's a, it's a tool to minimize the risk. Lastly, uh, our consistency in messaging, um, for a variety of things. I lead, obviously, in what I do, I lead a, a, a large group of very strong-willed individuals, um, to say the least. I feel like my job is trying to keep 100 frogs in a wheelbarrow. Um, you all are doing the same thing. It's an impossible task for all of us. What I've tried to do very hard for my group over the seven months is a very consistent message and we, and make it data-driven as much as we can. And that consistency, I think, is what's going to pay off in the long run. The other point I want to make to you all is, uh, Dr. Spenson, Mary Shaw, and, and you all in talking with Dr. Rowland have done an amazing job of getting this entire community, education, healthcare, together, public health, together to make the best decision-making. We're doing everything we can to support you in that. What we, every time we hear, oh my gosh, we're running into a crisis, or we're going to have all these people ask for exemptions from the masks, we helped develop a policy that we're not going to give them, except for certain reasons, okay? We're not going to respond to, uh, we need a mask for this. Uh, we most recently developed a plan. We were hearing that there was, you all were dealing with inconsistencies in testing. They'd go see one doctor, not get tested, another doctor would test. We did what we could to standardize that through the whole community. So we're giving our entire region, I think more than many other communities, that standardized approach that gives a consistent message and is reassuring that we're all on the same page trying to do the same things. Again, respond to the data, not the fear. You know, I get the fear from my folks as well, and I think we've got there. Uh, and again, to reinforce what Dr. Lindsay said, the metrics are not cut, uh, cut point, uh, cut points. They're guardrails for the trends. Uh, we don't need to change what we're doing just because one number looks a little out of whack and is over what, whatever that color is related to. So thank you for your time. Uh, I hope that was useful information. And I'll stick around and see if there's anything else I can do for questions as we go along.
Sounds good. And welcome, Dr. Rowland.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to be here for questions and answers, but I'm just going to introduce Dr. Michael Martin, who's here by Zoom. He's a general pediatrician, who's the current president of the Virginia Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. He represents over 1,300 pediatricians in Virginia. He serves on a number of advisory committees for both the Virginia Department of Health and the Governor's Office. And he's currently on the Steering Committee of the Immunization Coalition in Virginia. He still actively practices pediatrics at his office in Tyson's Corner that serves over 2,000 families. And, let me see. And I wanted to briefly mention that he also, um, put together the School Reopening Task Force. And it's important that you know about this. We work together as pediatricians, I'm chairing this. And it's a group of pediatricians from all over the state. And we also have, um, nurses from the Virginia Department of Education as well as the Department of Health. So it's a tremendous resource because we can really all, um, talk to each other, brainstorm ideas, keep up on all of the new recommendations that are coming out. For instance, just yesterday, we had a meeting with, um, cardiologists and sports medicine experts throughout the state to decide when do we get our athletes back post-COVID. So I feel that it's important for you as the board to know that, um, we're staying up on all, all of the changes that are happening so rapidly and working with our partners at the Virginia Department of Health as well as the Department of Education and school nurses. So the collaboration's been very rewarding. But, Dr. Martin, where are you?
Hey, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Dr. Martin, hello. Carolyn Rice, School Board Chair. Welcome you on behalf of all my colleagues.
Oh, thank you. And thank you, uh, uh, Dr. Rowland for inviting me and, and for the board for inviting, inviting me to be able to speak today. It means a lot to me, um, especially in my role as AAP Chapter President. Um, and I want to say from pediatricians across the state, we really value the parents, teachers, and schools who are caring for the kids in Virginia and appreciate everything you all are doing. Though, many of you who know, uh, the American Academy of Pediatrics, we have a reputation for being conservative and cautious in our approach, which is generally what you want or expect from an organization that's devoted to protecting kids' health. Um, and I can assure you that we take this disease and the rest of the community and those who work in schools very seriously. Um, as Dr. Rowland indicated, I am a general pediatrician, um, like many who are members of the AAP Chapter. Um, and we've continued to see kids every day suiting up in protective gear to ensure that we continue to vaccinate and care for kids and not bring the disease home to our own families. And what we found is that with the right mitigation strategies in place since the beginning, we've been able to successfully do, do that and are confident, um, that Virginia Beach School System and other school systems can experience the same success. And I think showing signs that you are having the same success as you reopened. Now, the interesting thing, this is, this virus is very different from most respiratory viruses that, that we deal with every year, um, all the way through the winter school season. And school-aged kids clearly play a role in driving things like influenza rates within communities. Um, but now we're having data and it's, it's becoming ever, ever more clear that this has not been the case with COVID-19, whether it is in areas where schools have reopened in the U.S. or not, when mitigation strategies are employed. Um, and it's not what we expected in the beginning. I think there was a great fear that, that it would follow the pattern of other viruses, but it really hasn't. Um, I'm encouraged, even my own area in North Virginia, that even while the incidence of COVID-19 has creeped higher, uh, we're seeing pediatric cases, cases have actually dropped since September despite daycares and private schools being opened. Um, schools clearly don't appear to be stoking the community transmission in the U.S. or, or in other parts of the world as well. So why are conservative pediatricians like me advocating so passionately for schools to safely reopen? Because there is an emotional and physical gap in children's wellbeing that Dr. Mitchell did a wonderful job of explaining to you as well that's created when kids don't attend school in person. And I can tell you, just over this past weekend, I referred one adolescent to the ER for spiraling depression that began at the end of June, who know how, who now has suicidal thoughts. Monday night, I worked, uh, up until about eight, and my last appointment was a consult with a six-year-old who's actively aggressive now, acting now since, uh, the family's been struggling at home, uh, keeping the child engaged, uh, with activities in school. And quite frankly, is not able to do those things because both parents are working. Um, this has played out across our state. It's backed up by data. Uh, we at the chapter have actually, you know, been doing surveys with the pediatricians. And our last one, we were seeing upwards, 60% increase reported by pediatricians seeing anxiety and depression. And unfortunately, Virginia Beach is part of those numbers, and it's not immune to this. Now, as the chapter president, I remain committed to facts and data and best practices. I have the responsibility to inform pediatricians throughout the state, listen to all views, and be nonpartisan in my approach. I've had the pleasure of working with pediatricians nationally as well as top officials at the Virginia Department of Health and the Department of Education. And I can look you in the eyes, virtually of course, and tell you honestly that I believe that reopening now in Virginia Beach is appropriate and in the best interest of your community, given the metrics and mitigation strategies you're working on. The more and more data I see, the more comfortable I am that children are not driving transmission, especially in school settings. Masks work, social distancing works, mitigation strategies work. I'm not going to say everything's perfect, and you can still see a couple cases here and there. I will tell you that we think you are making a safe, educated decision to reopen your schools in the face of scientific evidence and metrics. Um, I want to thank you guys for inviting me to this and, and opportunity to speak to you and for your commitment to the health and educational kids.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Martin.
So that actually brings our presentation part of the workshop to a close. And, um, it, we're, we're available for questions, staff, as well as our physicians. And I'd suggest we maybe focus on the guests who are here. And then obviously, we'll be here during the information and action items to, to talk more about, uh, both that and the budget.
So with that, we'll, we'll take questions for any of our physicians, including you, Mrs. Holtz.
No, none here.
Okay, let us know if that changes. Ms. Owens, you can get us started off.
If there's somebody else who may want to wait, we're going to get her a microphone.
Just a slight pause here. Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, I just had, um, a couple of questions. Uh, I don't know, uh, maybe Dr. Lindsay, whoever. Uh, one of my questions is about the, uh, testing and, uh, the way it's labeled. And it's just that I am not familiar with the acronyms. Uh, can you tell me what the difference is between the RT-PCR test versus the regular PCR test? And when I see them in the, um, the positivity things and they say PR test only, PCR test only, like what? Help me understand what that means.
So they're really abbreviating when they say PCR or RT-PCR. That is the gold standard test that we use. There are others that are coming out now, such as some of the rapid testing. There's rapid antigen. There's also a rapid PCR, right? Um, but the gold standard is the PCR test. Um, we, um, are starting to, um, to collect or, or get reports from labs of rapid antigen testing. So we do try to make an effort in our reporting to differentiate whether we're talking about PCR only or both PCR and, and antigen testing.
Okay, so when, um, when we, where is the slide?
So I don't know what reference you're looking at, but uh, if it's PCR only, but, um, that would be what we call the nuclear test, which is the one that we started out with in the beginning, the gold standard.
Would that mean that people who did rapid tests are not included in those counts?
If it says PCR only, they would not be included. But some of our totals do include, um, antigen testing, I believe. So I'm not sure exactly which one you're looking at. I would have to go back and reference the.
Okay, no problem. Somebody can go ahead and I'll pull up the slide and then we can look at it.
Okay. Mrs. Melnick.
Thank you for, um, for all of that. I really appreciate it. Um, so our reopening plan is based on, uh, 60% return rate. So we gave our parents the choice. So my fear moving forward, um, is that perhaps we, we will have a, a large group of students who fall into these risk categories that you talk about, depression and students who are not enrolling in school. And how do we address that? And all of you feel comfortable with our plan based on what we're doing now. Um, but to compare us to a private school is really unfair since our numbers are so large. So we, we just really cannot compare ourselves to any other schools. Um, when do you think, based on what we're able to do in our buildings, when we might be looking at 100% return rate for our division? And by the way, I'm really proud of our efforts as we really are the only ones that are actually doing this. And so, um, you know, some of us have kids still in our schools. I have two in college that struggle with the Zoom feature. Um, but they go nowhere without masks. And I think that's the key. But based on that, what could we possibly be looking at for our return of 100% of our students?
I wish we had that crystal ball.
Yeah, me too.
You're asking a million-dollar question. And I think that it's a good question, and it's a hard question. And I wish I had an answer for you. I think, you know, we, we, we all recognize the need for kids to be in physical school. And we want them, every child, to have that choice to go back. But I don't think any of us know the exact answer to that question. I think we can only do the best that we can do right at this moment and watch all the numbers and watch the metrics and see how things go. As Dr. Martin alluded to, we have more data now than we did in July. When you think about that July meeting, I was on Zoom till 2:00 in the morning with you all. And our numbers were high. Yet you had an administration that wasn't afraid to lead the way on this, which is the only reason why we have anybody in school right now. It's because they were loading up trucks of Plexiglas. So we can look ahead, and I appreciate your question because I think we need to be thinking about that. And I know they already are. But I think we can't plan everything right now. We have to do the mitigation. We have to do it well. They're, they're starting to look at data across the nation and get some of this information together that will make us be able to say, well, can we push the three feet? You know, can we do that? Because space is a big one, right? Right now, we can't. You know, it's just, it's a big, I trust Dr. Spence. He knows the whole picture operationally. And so we work with what we've got. But maybe soon, we'll have more, more data to say, you know what? When the, because we have room to do so in all of the recommendations that are out there. It says spacing as able, you know? So I think as time goes on, that will be the first thing that we look at, you know?
But it was also mentioned that, um, Dr., your plan is like 100 frogs, keeping 100 frog, jumping frogs in a wheelbarrow. But the truth is, is that we have 40% of our families that, as much as we want to say, react on data, not fear. We have 40% of our families who's, who are, who are truly frightened and have circumstances, um, that Dr. Lindsay listed, grandparents. Um, we, we have a, a large number of families who, who are raising their grandchildren and, um, underlying health conditions. And so I think as a board, it's fair to say that we all want to move forward and we feel good about what's going on right now. But people really are afraid. And we have to be able to work with that as well. Um, but I, I really appreciate you being here and.
And I think too, that point, that's why we have that virtual parallel option.
Correct.
You know, because some of those families, because I take care of some of those families. And, and they're choosing virtual for the year, some of them.
But we have to find a way to make that good for them too. Because that is their reality. And we have to be able to say, it's okay. It's okay to, to, um, to be sad. I've got kids that are sad about it too. Um, and we, we, you know, meant, we, we had a mental health crisis really on our hands before COVID. Of course, this is adding to it. But the construction of the CHKD Mental Health Building was already underway before COVID. And so, um, we, we, as a division, also have to find a way to make every decision that parents are making okay. And we have to do our part to, to respect that. And, um, and we need our parents to, I, I, I don't mean to be on a soapbox, but we, we're, we're hearing great things from our schools with the masks. Um, I'm really, really proud of that. Um, but I'm really more concerned about making everybody feel good about the decision they made, um, moving forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Felton.
Thank you, Sherri. Um, I would ask, uh, I guess, Dr. Mitchell, uh, you're talking about our numbers and how they look and how low that they are. Would this be a direct result of how we are phasing our students back into school? How we're putting, I know with the law, with a student not having breakouts or having a lot of casualties? Or is this a direct result of us, how we're phasing, how we're doing the school?
I, I think the, the numbers that we've seen right now is the natural trend of what's happening in the community. And my point was that, um, the data nationally and the data from the kids that you already have back are showing that that's not so far impacting that. We still have the same slightly below 5% positivity in the community that bringing the kids back into the classroom are not sending that skyrocket, getting back up like it was in July and August.
Yes, thank you. And I, and I meant to say, thank you, Dr. Lindsay. Thank you, Dr. Rowland, and thank you, Dr. Mitchell, for taking this time to be with us, to explain these things. I wanted to go back to, and this might be, this question might be to administration, back to the slide from the VHD considerations, remitigation strategy. And they talked about, we have, it stated up here, 22.9% African-Americans in our school. What percent? What percentage of that, those students have, will be returning or have returned back into the school? Can you give me that number?
I'll have to get that for you. I don't have that off the top of head.
Okay. And with that said, rolling along with that, you might have to get these numbers for me as well. The teachers, how many teachers do we have that are out on FMLA? And/or have retired or resigned? And these are beginning with the school year, this year. Is that possible, that they have those numbers as well?
Yes, ma'am. We can get you those numbers.
Thank you.
Good for now. Mrs. Felton?
Yes, thank you.
Mrs. Weems and then Mrs. Riggs.
Yes, thank you, Doctors Mitchell, Martin, and Roland. I think it's great news that you share with us tonight. And it's scientific. It's database that our schools are not experiencing outbreaks, that pediatric cases have actually declined since September, since daycares have been open, since schools have been open, since private schools have been open. So that is just fantastic news. The bad news, of course, is 60% increase in anxiety and depression. And I think that y'all obviously warned us or knew this even weeks and weeks and weeks ago. But the data now really proves it, that kids and families are really struggling emotionally, psychologically, and mentally. So I just hope that we can definitely move forward and try to get all these kids back into the classroom as soon as possible. And that's, you know, why we did have parental choice because, you know, I've got really close friends in my neighborhood who have chosen to go virtual till February, basically. And I haven't come across anybody who has felt that they are shamed because they made that choice. You know, I haven't. And I've got family, I'm raising a granddaughter, so I'm in that category. I've got a brother with a kidney transplant, a granddaughter that just had open heart surgery. And they are bunkered down not seeing anybody. And that is a great decision for them. But I think we've done a good job about really empowering families to make that own decision for what's best for your children and your family. And I don't see that anybody has felt bad about that decision because we encourage, you know, we continue to encourage what's best for your child. You know your situation. So I think that, I just appreciate this news. I think it's really, hopefully eye opening that it is data that we shouldn't react or act in fear, but just in reality of what's best, you know, under the roof of your family. So I look forward to getting as many of these students back as possible and as quickly as possible. One quick question, mask breaks. What do you think and what are we doing with mask breaks? I mean, I need them. That's why I had to go back there for a few minutes. But I'm hearing different things about students getting mask breaks during the day. I'm hearing that some aren't. I'm hearing that some kids are having to wear their mask at recess. Other schools, they're not. But as physicians, what is your recommendation? And what is a healthy amount of time to have a child wear a mask or have a mask break throughout the day? Can you just kind of enlighten me on that?
Maybe I shouldn't have been the first one to step up on this. I'll defer to the pediatrician on that part. I would remind you, though, that we are talking about a spectrum of risk. And if that mask is not being worn, then there is a risk of exposure. I try to encourage people as much as possible, if they have a need for a break, that that's separate and apart from other people. So if you're at work, maybe in your car or somewhere where you are not encountering other individuals. And it is not something that I would encourage, for example, in a classroom. We may be talking about a classroom where people are already at three feet, maybe, not six feet. And so there's already a risk of exposure. And taking the mask down is just increasing the exposure risk for that child.
Okay, but obviously, I guess, what is pediatrician? What is your recommendation? If you can distance yourself, a mask break? Or what is your advice if they're outside playing at recess?
It's all the Swiss cheese model that has been shared with you. You know, the more the mask is down, the bigger that hole is that allows things to come through. You know, do we all need breaks? Sure. If I'm within six feet of somebody, that mask is up. And if that's the only choice you've got in the classroom, then there's no mask break in the classroom, is my recommendation. You know, if you've got a kid that just can't tolerate it anymore, you need to put them 10 feet away somewhere else where they can take a break, okay. Or outside running around, as long as they're keeping their distance and they're not standing around like at a cocktail table in a backyard because it's outdoors, you know? Which is what Dr. Lindsay alluded to, those behaviors of the barbecues. And even though they're outdoors, they're still not distancing. So the kids are outside playing like kids need to do, and they're not congregating while they're doing it. That's an opportune time to take that little bit of a break if you do. But if you're within six feet, you're increasing that risk of transmission by taking that break.
Okay, thank you, because we've got a lot of questions about recess. Dr. Spence, do we have an area? And I know my granddaughter is a hermitage, and I think she's explained it a certain way. But do we have an area, like if they're outside, can they go off? Or there are like hula hoops or areas where they can go and take their mask off? Or even inside the classroom? If a child just feels like they're, you know, having just anxiety of the mask, can they go somewhere to take that mask off? Or is it site based? Does it just kind of depend on the teacher?
So, yeah, it's going to depend on the school and then what they have available to them. So all of our schools, particularly elementary schools right now with recess, have established areas for recess. But how and where of that depends on the school, right? So Cook Elementary does not have a significant space for recess compared to some of our other schools. But they have students outside at recess in the front of the building and then in the back in their courtyard. I visited that. I would not say we have an area where students can go stand and take a mask break in our classrooms. Because, you know, we have maximized the space available in our classrooms to maximize the number of students that we can bring back into our classrooms. So that's a situation where that student, and this is where you have to rely on the professional judgment of your teachers, right? Where you have to say, okay, this child needs a break. Let's get this child a break. Let's call an administrator to come help us. They can take them outside for a breath of fresh air, or they can simply have them stand outside, you know, and work through that with their administrator on what are the best ways to make that happen. And it's going to be site by site.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
I would just like to add that as a pediatrician, I've found it impressive that kids are really good at wearing masks. In my office since March, it's the adults that have it creeping down under the nose. Those kids are, they're used to wearing shoes and jackets and all kinds of things that parents and adults don't want them to wear. So like Dr. Spence said, I think we rely on the teachers. And if we see any pockets of problems, we can address it. But I think we as adults think kids need more mask breaks than they actually do. They just get used to it and they're running around and.
Thank you. We're winding down here, but Mrs. Riggs and Mrs. Manning haven't had the opportunity. So we're going to try and squeeze you both in.
Okay, so I don't know who this is for. Maybe it's just for administration. But if someone has tested positive and has been closer than six feet to all the students in a classroom, for instance, if they're walking around the classroom longer than that 15 minutes, does the entire class go into quarantine? What happens? What's the procedure with that?
Yeah, everything comes down to our conversation with the Department of Health after they've done the contact tracing and worked with us. But I will say typically right now, what has happened in that situation that you just described is that we have quarantined the classroom.
Okay.
That would be the short answer.
For your full 14 days?
It would be.
Or 10?
It would be an investigation to determine whether everyone in that setting was determined to have had an exposure. And as you've defined it, it sounds as if we would determine that there was an exposure. And it would be the entire class for 14 days. No shortening that with a testing, 14 days.
Okay, and that just brings me, I know we've established the three foot rather than the six foot. And, you know, we've been warned about that. But with us bringing more kids in, and I know that was one of the things you said would be definitely a challenge. It concerns me for that. So, and I'm sure it does you guys too. Any thoughts on that or any more?
Well, we're not bringing more students into the existing classrooms. We're bringing students into different classrooms. And so we'll still maintain the three feet of physical distancing that we have already allowed for in our mitigations. And so we're not going to, you know, shrink the size of that. And I think the good news that you heard tonight was that, you know, weeks into this now, we've not seen what the VDH would describe as outbreaks, even though we have students within three feet of each other in the buildings. And you're hearing the physicians talk about that the data is showing us that there is a way forward here. Not a no risk scenario, but a mitigated risk scenario. So for folks who think, well, you're bringing more students back, there are going to be more students closer together in classrooms. That's not what we mean by that. We will have other classrooms that we now open at three feet.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we all concur five more minutes to squeeze in Mrs. Manning and Mrs. Anderson? Okay, Mrs. Manning?
I have just two quick questions for one of the pediatricians. And it just piggybacks on Ms. Weems. I've had quite a few questions from parents about the masks. For example, several people have said that their children are coming home with headaches and they're attributing it to wearing the mask without breaks. Is that a genuine concern that could occur?
No.
Okay. So mask, wearing masks for an extended period of time does not cause headaches. Is that?
Correct. You know, you'd look at other factors, hydration, you know. It would be the first one.
Maybe not drinking as much while they're wearing them.
Making sure they're drinking throughout the day by taking it off for a split second to take a drink and then get it back on again. That's going to be your more likely cause of those sorts of things than actually wearing the mask. You're not rebreathing carbon dioxide. You're not suffocating under the mask, those sorts of things. It's probably more related to hydration and other factors.
Okay, and then the other question is, I don't know if there are any studies out there or if there's any data regarding Plexiglas use? And is that, is it effective? I mean, if everybody's wearing a mask, is Plexiglas needed? Is there any data or studies on that?
I'm not aware of studies that say one is better than the other. Again, that Swiss cheese model. The more of those things that you have in place between, the more we're going to decrease the spread and decrease the risk of outbreaks. If a child, if a staff person does come to the classroom, they acquired outside, you're going to decrease the spread by having multiple things in place.
Okay, thank you. And thank you guys so much for being here. Really appreciate it. And Dr. Martin also.
Would it be helpful to explain the testing anymore?
Yeah, the orange?
Because I don't, what I can do, if it helps anybody to understand what's happening, because I'm very involved with the laboratory at CHKD, so I can tell you what happens at CHKD. The RT-PCR is testing for RNA, all right, in the virus. It's testing for viral RNA. It's not testing for the surface of the virus. It's not testing for infectious virus. And so that's the stuff that you've heard over time that you can have somebody that's positive for eight weeks, 10 weeks. That's not infectious virus, okay? We've proven very clearly, and the CDC stated again, updated today or yesterday, that beyond about eight days after that initial positive test, nobody is infectious, unless they're immunocompromised, they're hospitalized, they're really sick. But in our setting, they're no longer infectious. So there is no value in repeating that test because it can still be positive by the PCR test because you're detecting RNA. You're not detecting infectious virus, okay? So what we have at CHKD, we've had from the very beginning, is the PCR test. Some of those that we use most routinely, sample that I obtained now, will get run tomorrow. There'll be a result tomorrow evening. We do have some of the one hour rapid, but those still require going into the hospital laboratory. And that might be a result that's later on this evening. Last night, I tested one yesterday. Last night, they had so many, I didn't get that result till about 10 o'clock this morning. All right, so it was about 20 hours after obtaining the sample, we got that result. So that's what's happening at the CHKD laboratory. The other ones that are considered point of care, that's what you hear about the 15-minute result. Oh, and as Dr. Lindsay said, what we're doing at CHKD is considered the gold standard because that is most likely to really get it. It's sensitive. If virus is there, it's going to find it. But doesn't necessarily mean it's infectious virus, okay? If you're a long way out from the beginning of the symptoms. The point of care testing is actually looking for the proteins on the surface of the virus, okay? It's not quite as good a test as the PCR test. There are false negatives. So a test in the office, it's a 15-minute test, depending upon the test, 85% of the time, or it could have a 15% false negative rate, depending upon the test, 5%, 15%. So that's the various tests that are available and what's being used when the kids are exposed, when the kids are symptomatic, when they come into a pediatrician's office to be tested or when staff are going to get tested.
Okay, and that kind of, that wasn't really.
A question of, the question about the Plexiglas, was that in relation to children or?
Can you step up, please, doctor?
The question about Plexiglas, in what situation were, was that question related to?
Was Mrs. Manning?
I was just kind of asking the effectiveness of it if we were, if everyone was already wearing a mask, you know, specifically in a classroom.
All right, so one clarification I wanted to be sure is to ensure that we were still using the mask as the primary measure.
Yes.
So I think that that's the major standard. The Plexiglas in the classroom, I'm not sure. I guess if you had a situation where people were very, very close together, that might be adding some additional protection for mucous membranes, that sort of thing. I think back to situations like grocery stores and other businesses where people are using Plexiglas alone. And as soon as you speak to them, they use Plexiglas. So it's not offering them very much protection.
Thank you for the clarification, Mrs. Anderson.
Oh, can I, I didn't get to ask.
Three minutes, okay. And then we'll try to squeeze you both in. But we have to.
I did raise my hand much earlier, but I guess it wasn't seen. Thank you. So, but I'm very encouraged that the doctors here this evening have given us, I'd say, a green light for the cautious approach that we are using to bring our students, the option one students back face to face. And our method of mitigation, using masks and distancing is, seems to be working. It seems to be successful so far. But I want our community to know, because we've received several emails from parents who are demanding, basically in their emails, that we, you know, we bring all students back, that we, everything should be just normal. We should all be, all be back face to face. And so, but, you know, but what we're being told over and over again is that the distancing and the using of masks and all is very important. And if we want to continue bringing students back, we need to continue with the distancing as our administration has recommended. And so I just wanted to say that, you know, because I think a lot of parents out there don't realize that we do read every single email and that our, we defer most of our comments back to parents or back to these emails. We defer to the chair to do that, but we are reading them all. But, you know, I just, I just want them to know because, I mean, we feel it too. And as was said earlier, you know, we all want everybody to be back. We want every student back in our classrooms. It's not that we don't want that to happen, but the strategy that we're using right now with the distancing and wearing masks, these strategies are working and we haven't had any major, major spread of the virus. So I think, I think we need to continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Owens, is this your follow-up to your earlier question?
This was my original question.
This is it, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. So slide six, that's up there now, that has the seven-day rolling average, and it says PCR only eastern region. And my question was, does that mean that there are additional cases that are not counted in here? Everybody who got a rapid test is not included in this chart that we're seeing?
If it says PCR only, the rapid antigen test would be.
Doctor, doctor, I'm sorry.
If it says PCR only, the rapid antigen testing results would not be included in this. But this is the more reliable. But this is the more reliable test here.
Do we, two questions on the reliability of that. With the possible negatives, is it more likely that the rapid test will give a false negative than a false positive?
The rapid antigen test, yes.
Okay. And do we have any...
Although we have heard recently of false positives with one of the antigen tests being a problem. Yet to see how much of a problem that one will be.
Okay. Do we have any idea how many rapid tests are being done in our region to be able to say that it's a very minute amount of positive tests that we are not seeing on this chart? Or how many people within our, you know, district or wherever are having the rapid test that we are not included when we're looking at our metrics?
I can try to get a number for you. I will tell you that it will not be the total number because we are dependent on all labs reporting that. And if you have point-in-time testing, meaning in a nursing home, that if they're using this test, that they're reporting every time they test and get a positive or a negative, that's not necessarily always happening either. And nursing home was the example, not to say nursing home is the problem, but particularly for the labs, we may or may not always be getting test results of these from every lab or getting them timely. So, that is something we're working on from the state level.
Okay, that might be helpful in explaining one of the other slides that...
However...
Can we have, can we ask?
This is reliable in terms of, we're following the same type of test over time, and we haven't shifted, and it's important to follow the trend here of that test.
Okay, we have to break now. Can we ask Ms. Owens to follow up through Dr. Spence with, to complete that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, doctors, very much. We are, for the benefit of the public, the reopening discussion will continue during the actions part of the formal meeting. And this workshop is adjourned with formal meeting to start at 6:00.